And Lexington. Got them booked. Every Friday for. Kind of really big contract. So. So that's, uh, that's been going on so summer and that's the run.
Congrats. This has been pretty good this year.
I have a new spotlight. Secret to build it. Just after.
The financial side of the audit, what was the actual outcome and be able to ask me any questions you might have in kind of an informal setting before you get the full audit picture later on. Jump right into the general fund revenues. You know, obviously an increase year to year from twenty-three to twenty-four. Start with the first category taxes, that includes your property taxes and your occupancy tax, both grew at about three percent year over year, both in line with what we projected in the budget for fiscal twenty-four. Intergovernmental services, this is where your sales tax, your Powell bill, pretty much any other taxes that flow through the state come in. We did see a larger increase here primarily driven through increases in the utility sales tax. So that's your electric and your pipe natural gas bills have a sales tax on them. That had that increased over the fiscal year. We also had an interesting situation where we essentially accrued a thirteen month, thirteenth month of sales tax. So we changed up how we recognize sales tax. This is the sales tax you pay when you go to the grocery store and then they remit it up to the state. So we were just accruing sixty days worth in line with how other governments had been doing it and how we recognize other incomes on our governmental funds. However, you may or may not know this, but when you buy something in June, the retailer submits that sales tax to the state in July. We actually don't get that till September. So in the past, we've been accruing sixty days, which was July and August accrual. We now do ninety days. And that's to line it up with our utility sales tax and how that's distributed as well. So everything's kind of fitting together now. But what it results in is for twenty-twenty-four, you have an extra month of accrual. It's, it's not big, but it's about two point seven million, which is part of that big increase. Again, that's a one time thing. Next year, you'll go back to seeing twelve months accruals. Another point of interest here, there's charges for services. You can pretty much call that million dollar difference City Lake Park. Turns out when you build a really nice park and you open it up, people flock to it. So we saw a tremendous increase in parks and recreation income for. Convenient, or not convenience, concessions and pool admissions, where there hadn't really been pool admissions for a few years while we were rebuilding the park. The next line is other. So that's primarily primarily made up of interest income, investment income. We had basically no investment income for more than a decade because of where the federal interest rates were sitting. Last couple of years, we've, we've actually earned investment income. It's nice. We don't know how long it's going to last. If you heard presentations two weeks ago, you'd hear different than if you heard a presentation today. We do know that the Fed rate will drop over time, it's likely going to. But we should still see investment income for the next few year, or the next few years. But it's really, it's hard to predict when we're going to see that fall off and as how it might drop over time. Okay, so that'll wrap up general fund revenues, general fund expenditures. I want to assure everyone, we did not spend twenty-six million dollars more in twenty-four than twenty-three. About fourteen million dollars of public safety salaries were moved out of the general fund last year for the ARPA fund. It's that ARPA enabled money that we talked about. That was in order to satisfy the needs of the ARPA distribution and, but it falsely looks like we spent less money on public safety than we actually did. So about fourteen million dollar difference there. There's about five million dollars in leases. We've talked about this a couple of times in finance committee, but now when we lease equipment, the accounting standards essentially make it look like we purchased the equipment. So we expense the full amount of the lease in the year that we enter into it. So it artificially inflates like the expenditures for that year. And there's about five million dollars built into that number, mostly between public safety and culture and recreation for a couple of leases they entered into. And then about five million dollars across the entire general fund can be related to personnel expense. You know, you all know, we've taken steps to increase personnel. Salaries with comp class studies and market increases in order to retain. The largest group of employees is in that public safety group, so that's where a lot of that increase shows up. Fund balance, so if you're in the nonprofit world, this is called net assets. If you're in the private world, this is called equity. This is your cash and investments and other assets minus your liabilities. There's two numbers I really want you to, that I really want to hold in on restricted fund balance. This is anything that is receivable at year end. Or is in some other way restricted, meaning that state statutes won't allow you to actually appropriate it, spend it. So the local government budget fiscal control act says that your available fund balance is really just your cash and investments minus your liabilities, minus your encumbrances. So this number has about fourteen million dollars of accounts receivable. Plus property and other things that you can't appropriate because you don't have cash for those things at June thirty. Today, we've received that fourteen million dollars, but at June thirty, we didn't have it, so we can't appropriate it in the subsequent year. This unassigned committed assigned number. So committed makes up some economic development money that we've set aside for economic development incentive fund. Some transportation dollars, like if we hold on to money for developer turn lanes that have to only be used for that specific purpose, that's where it's sitting. This unassigned number is essentially your available for appropriation number. So that number increased by about two point seven million dollars year over year. And I'm going to break it down a little more on this next slide. So in that six million dollar growth in the restricted fund balance, again, some of that was property, you can't appropriate property. And then three point eight million dollars is an increase in your receivables. And based on general statutes, you can appropriate what you don't have at June thirty. So that is kind of tied up in there. Your unassigned fund balance, which is essentially what you can think of as your available for appropriation, was about two point seven million dollar increase. The general fund budget for fiscal twenty-three to twenty-four grew by about nine million dollars. So that puts you in line with that twenty-five percent that the LGC says you should be at as a percentage of your budget. So we, we added approximately the right amount to fund balance based on the growth of the budget from year to year.
So, excuse me, I'm the council manager. So we, we added the proper amount, so now we're in line with what?
The growth is in line, the growth in the fund balance. However, if you just looked at general fund fund balance, we are still at probably about nineteen percent of the subsequent year budget. The performance indicator that the auditors are going to show you tonight where it says thirty percent, that includes the cash that's in our debt service fund. So the LGC lets you combine those two together. We talked about that a little bit during the budget session. It's, it's kind of confusing the way they allow for it. But, so that, that thirty percent number you see later on will include that debt service fund cash.
So we still have a little bit of work to do to build that fund up?
If the goal was to get to the twenty-five percent that the LGC recommends. Proprietary fund operations, this is your water sewer, parking, stormwater, transit, all of your enterprise funds. Nominal growth in charges for services, I think we're at about two point four percent. I will note there here that about a hundred and twenty million out of that two hundred and eighty million is electric. So they're obviously a much, a big part of our enterprise. They did not have a rate increase. You're always going to have some fluctuation in their revenue based on weather and it translates to electricity used. But, but yeah, so that's very moderate, consistent growth that we would expect, all within, you know, our budget and our revenue projections there. On the expense side, you're, you're showing about a three and a half percent increase year over year. I'll tell you, if you, if you control for power purchases though, and pull that out, it's closer to eight percent, which is very reflective of what we told you during the budget season. We were still seeing inflationary pressures at that time during the fiscal year. We hope that that has started to normalize. We know that fuel prices and things have stabilized over time and hope that other operating prices will as well. But I don't want to, I guess, vary the real increase in cost here because we did have a, we all know that we have wholesale power. Cost decreases, so I don't, I don't want that to get lost. That overall, it is more expensive for my utilities than it was the year before, as you would expect in line with the discussions we've had around inflation. Okay, so now citywide look at cash and investments. You do see cash go down, that's nothing to worry about. We issue bonds, that sits in cash, and then we spend it down as we, as we work on capital projects, we set money aside, we spend them down as we work on capital projects. We did take, so this NC Capital Management Trust, you can think of that as kind of your money market account. That's the most liquid, highest interest earning account that you have. What we've done is knowing that interest rates are probably at their peak, we started converting some of that to government agency bonds, Fannie Mae, US Treasuries. In line with our risk policy to just try to hold on to some of those, hold on to some of the interest income over the next few years. Because this is going to drop as Fed rate drops, and it has. I think it started out the year about five and a quarter, it's about four and a half percent now, which is still amazing when you look at the past decade and a half of roughly nothing.
Question.
Yes.
You mentioned the National, the Capital Management Trust Fund to be the most liquid, most interest bearing, but you described it as a money market, so you're saying it has more interest in a bond?
So it is, it is because of the type of bonds that we buy, right? Which are US Treasury bonds or. US Agency Bonds, it's almost exact, like there's very little difference in the interest rates. But this is going to flow along with the Fed fund rate. And so as the Fed fund rate has dropped over the year, we've seen that drop as well. The same with new government agency bonds, right? Those will drop and they're not as attractive as they were nine months ago, but it's still a way for us to lock in those interest rates over the next two or three years. With a two or three year maturity bond. So all in, cash looks good, it's being invested as efficient as we can. A lot of this NC Capital Management Trust is also where we park our bond proceeds, so it's available for as we construct these projects. But again, we're earning the best interest we can without tying up those funds long term. This slide is really just to illustrate that we are continuing to add to infrastructure, land, building, equipment. We're investing every year into the city. And, and really just a, you can put a number there, right? So you can see that we grew our fixed assets by seventy million. So when you see a approaching five hundred million dollar budget, it's not all going away at the end of the year. There's, there's real assets that are being improved upon or built during that budget as well.
Question.
Yes.
The increase in land is not necessarily acquiring land, it's just the increase in the value where we really at?
It is an increase in the acquisition, so we're not doing market value adjustments for land, they're all cost basis. So that is land that we've acquired throughout the year.
Very good. And then could you explain intangible assets, please?
Sure, so that would be funny, we were talking about leases a minute ago, so the new accounting standards around leases, essentially any lease we enter into is we have to record a right to use that asset. So body worn cameras, we now have an asset on our books, even though it's a lease, for the right to use that asset.
All right, thank you.
And that construction progress number, that just means that we are, doesn't mean we are building less, it just means that we finished up projects, we moved them on to another category up here. That's where they sit while we're constructing. In terms of our citywide debt, again, nothing big here of concern. We added geo debt and we retired debt, but we retired more than we added, so that number dropped. Your notes, leases, installment purchase, all remained pretty flat. Your revenue bonds, we did not issue, we only retired, so about nine and about nine point three lower. We only retired, so about nine and about 9.3 lower. Compensated absences is essentially the value of the vacation leave.
That's what I was just about to ask.
Yeah. And that, that is going to change over the next couple of years. And I think the auditors are going to mention it tonight. There's a concern that we will have to start including sick leave, which if you know anything about government sick leave, it doesn't go away. And so we're trying to work with our auditors exactly how that'll look, because it shouldn't be this infinite liability on the city when it's really built into our retirement calculations. That's where our city, that's where our sick leave goes after it accrues for an employee for 30 years, right? The city doesn't actually pay it out unless somebody actually takes a sick day. It goes into their, it goes into their retirement liability, which is included already on our books. So this is your special separation allowance for law enforcement, your local government employee retirement system, a very small amount for post employee benefits, sit in this 94 or $98 million number. Most of that's completely outside of our control. It's based on actuarial determinations. The elders specifically is managed at the state level by the state treasurer's office. You will never see an invoice for this amount. This is just an actuarially determined liability of those, those programs. Landfill closure and post closure. We have a landfill. As we start closing it down, there are costs that we will incur for the future. While we maintain that covered landfill, there will be costs as well. Therefore, there's a liability. This small line of credit here was related to forward High Point. It is no longer there and it'll disappear next year. I just want to add this slide. I know there's, there's no right answer for what is the right debt per capita, but I know that conversation has come up as we've had our financial advisors come in. Just want to show that over time, we're pretty consistent with our debt per capita. It goes up, it goes down as we issue. 2,500 on average. I can't tell you if that's good or bad. I can tell you there's AAA rated debt on either east or west of us that are closer to $4,000 per capita. So I don't think, if you were trying to compare the debt burden on the citizens of High Point, that you have anything to be concerned about. And over time, it stayed pretty flat. We did have one audit finding that you'll hear about tonight. For the Raze grant, as the auditors were reviewing, reviewing their quarterly reports, the, they discovered that the senior transportation employee who was preparing those reports was just sending them to DOT rather than going through a review process. So I'm not aware of any misstatements or anything in the reports, but based on the DOT terms as well as our own grant policy, they should have been reviewed by a supervisor and gone to financial review as well. These were not reimbursements, so no money was drawn down from the grants or anything like that as a result of it. And we have educated the employee and the director on how that grant should be handled and how those reports should be reviewed in the future. So it's been corrected. There were no question costs, but it is a finding. And we have to respond because the LGC now requires a response. If you have a finding or a financial performance indicator of concern, the governing board has to develop a response. We've got your response ready for you. It's essentially the same response that's in our audit. It says this was discovered. The employee and the department were educated on how to handle these reports moving forward. And yeah, so relatively light finding. Sandra's going to pass around a letter. This is our response to the LGC is essentially this. It restates what happens. It says what should have happened and that the department has been educated on what needs to happen. But again, these were not reimbursements. Nothing material that I'm aware of was misstated on them. The, the employee had just been, you know, working on the project and was sending their reports on. Do you have any questions? I know there were a couple asked about numbers, but if you guys have any other questions, if you think of a question later, if you read this tonight and you have questions about it, I'm always happy, I know. I'm always happy to answer questions either through email or whatever you, whatever your choices.
Thank you, Vince. Any, any questions for Mr. Fishon?
Well, we want to say thank you for doing that. We look forward to the presentation this evening.
I'm sorry, I did want to just, sorry, I should shake your head. Assistant Finance Director back there. Her team put this together while also implementing our very new and exciting ERP system, Workday. They're, they're working overtime every day to make it happen. I just want to say I appreciate them and just take a second to recognize.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, we'll transition to our next agenda items, 2024-469, closed session for attorney-client privilege. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion made by Mayor Proctor Holmes and segment by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session? All those who agree, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we will go into closed session.